This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is October 9th, 2024, and it is 6:05 PM. Roll call.
Eric Wilshiner.
Here.
Jim McGough.
Here.
Jason Daly.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Randy is still a little under the weather, so.
Mike Ferguson.
Mike has not gotten a hold of us, so I guess he is unexcused.
Michael Ferguson.
Present.
All right, go for it. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marriage report. The landfill closure group annual meeting is coming up on November 5th at 2:30. I believe that's a Tuesday. I'd like the member of the city council to volunteer to be able to go to that if possible. Let us know if you can go, and we'll get you the information about that. McMurphy Park fundraiser concert by the Friends of Little Falls was a success. There were over 300 people that attended. It was a great show. It was a lot of fun, and I hear they're planning on having some more events into the future, so more, more to come. Parks, Sport and Planning Committee meetings will be next week on the 17th. The Street and Stormwater Infrastructure Project, Part Two, we can expect work to begin. Actually, it will not be the last week of October. It'll probably be the following week after that, beginning of November. Too much hunting going on.
Is that the down Seventh Street?
No, this would be the City of Vader one. This would be fixing various culverts in town. The Seventh Street Highway one, that's the county water project, and that actually should be starting around the same time. They did say November, so there'd be a lot of digging and cutting and going around. City submitted a grant for Fourth of July event assistance through the county lodging tax for tourism-related activities. So we saw that Morton gets help with their Fourth of July festivals, so we figured hey, maybe we can get some help too. So we submitted an application for that. I had a sit-down meeting with Senator Jeff Wilson to discuss everything going on in Vader. As you know, a couple, few years ago, we redistricted and we're now part of the 19th district that goes out towards the coast, and so Jeff is our new senator. He's going to help us get some financial assistance with our Outfall and the Station project. That'll be good. Assistance for the Anderson family is still, still ongoing. Of course, Dan Anderson was our, the water, the county water employee here in town, and his wife passed away unfortunately suddenly, and there's a meal train going on right now, so you can inquire here at City Hall for details to see how you can help provide some meals for the family. I know we're dropping some off today to help them out, too. They've been very appreciative. Upcoming 2025 budget public hearings on October 23rd for revenue, property tax and levy rates, and 11-6 for the preliminary budget, and 12-4 for the final budget. It's that time again. Any members of the council have any reports tonight?
I had Kristen call the state. I don't know if it bothers anybody else, but I had Kristen call the state to ask when they were going to mow between Vader and the highway because it looks very unkept and overgrown, so they're supposed to be starting here anytime.
Oh, excellent.
And just so, you know, get us cleaned up a little bit, maybe.
More reasons for us to not be able to get to the freeway and one shot. So much stuff going on between here and the freeway, between the fiber optic project and water project and whatever the heck else is going on. That's great.
Thank you for taking that initiative, Jim, Jason. No problem.
Any other council reports? Moving on to agenda approval. I don't have any modifications.
I'll make a motion that we approve city council meeting. Approve the council meeting agenda for October 9th, 2024.
We have a motion on Mr. Daly to approve the agenda for October 9th. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second of Ms. Goff, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for September 25th, 2024.
We have a motion on Mr. Daly to approve the minutes for September 25th. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second of Ms. Goff, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the 1st of October, 2024, for $31,276.
We have a motion on Mr. Daly to approve the vouchers as stated. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second of Ms. Goff, any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports, Lewis County Sheriff's Department. Hello, Mr. Rubin.
Good morning. On the door, particular storm, I'd like to apologize if there was an error. On 9:15, I definitely put a ship down there, and that was reflected by the initial storm. So a copy will be sent to the clerk tomorrow, but I had neglected to put that particular ship down this far. So the total activity for citizen contacts are 358. On shift calls, two. There are 19 traffic stops, 12 infractions issued, four criminal misdemeanor ones, and one stolen arrest. There were 35 off-shift calls, or a total of 37 calls for that mine time, and that's about it.
How'd the concert go?
I was unable to.
Wow. I know there were plenty of vehicles driving around. I know the City of Winlock actually came and drove through McMurphy Park during the concert to check it out, so there was a lot of activity.
It sounded like it was pretty amazing, and hopefully I can make the next one.
But no, no crimes.
Joe, they were actually, they were, they were there looking for an elderly male that had gone missing.
Oh, so they had other, they had official business, huh?
Yes. Indeed.
Excellent. Well, it was good to see every, the different law enforcement driving around. I know a couple of short vehicles driving through town that night, and so it all worked out well.
Glad, like I said, it sounded like it was a pretty amazing event, and hopefully I'll be able to make the next one.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. The response time on your calls, did you ever put that on the chart? Thanks.
Not yet.
As far as on this particular, no, I do not have the response calls for the individual calls, response time.
All right, thank you. Next is, let's do Pastor Stephen Caskey first. Yeah, yeah. You'll probably be less lengthy than, than the Assessor's Department.
Your second is a little.
Okay, we jumped again. You had another hour.
I was way down.
What, Robbie? He knows you.
Well, I, I only have a two-hour sermon. I don't have anything like that ever. I'll just try to be as brief as possible, but I thank you for letting me have a chance to address you and maybe to bring you up to date a little bit on our church. It's the oldest church in town. It's a historic church. The ministry was started in 1891 by the Evangelical Association. They got enough money by 2002 to build the church, and so it is a very old church. It's on the National Record of Historic Places, which we did in 2002. We had a great big celebration for that, and it's just fantastic. I was appointed here in 1989, so I've been serving this church for 35 years. I know one person in this room. I should know everybody, but I don't. I live in Morton, so it's a little bit of a commute, but I get here often. And when I first came, there were seven dear women that were keeping this church going, and they're all gone now. The last one died about 15 years ago, Ruby Wade, and she was 101 years old. And maybe you know some of these women. Amy Bane, Mary Thomas, Mary Creach, Emma Nolan, Ruby Wade, and Mabel Nelson. And they were fantastic, and they ushered me through the first few years of the ministry here, and that was great. Just a little bit of the history that I want to give you since I've been here. Marjorie and Frank Thacker, they lived right here in Vader, and they started coming to church almost immediately. And Frank was the one who really got started the restoration of the church, and he poured a lot of energy into that, and his wife, Marjorie, was the one who set up our first homecoming in 1991. And we had the church full, like 102 people. The church holds 30 people, and if you get 35, it starts feeling full. You get 50, you get 102, they're hanging out everywhere on the sides and everything else. But we've been having our homecoming every year since then, in October, and it is this Sunday, and we're having a great music program. A number of people are coming to perform, and it's just a great celebration every year that we do that. So, and that's been going on since 1991, so we've had a number of those. That's when we started the restoration project with Frank Thacker. Then Jerry Schroeder, and maybe people don't know that name, but Jerry grew up here, and his mother Dorothy was the matriarch of this church. And Jerry showed up one Sunday, and then he started getting really excited about putting the church back together, and he donated a lot of money and time and energy into that project. And two fellows showed up that really did most of the work, and that was Ted Smith and Patrick Tenell. Patrick lives in, lived at Ryder Wood at the time, and Ted lives just south toward Castle Rock. And they, they did everything. They started with the back room, and that was the annex that was built in 1935 and was added on, but it was really dingy. And the seven dear women quilted every week there, and they built a fire in the old cook stove that we had back there. Well, Jerry just figured we really needed to fix that up, and so he donated a lot of money, and these two guys just poured their heart and soul into redoing the backs part. And it was built by Pastor Bergstrasser in 1935, and so now it is officially called the Bergstrasser Hall, and so it's, it's great. But they got so excited that they kept on going. They did the sanctuary next and completely did the floors and everything, and it's just great. And they kept going with that. They built a little library room. They fixed my office. They fixed a little bedroom that I sometimes stay in when I get to Vader, and so the church has never looked better since 1902, and so it's in great shape, and it's wonderful. I invite you all to come see it if you're available on Sunday at 1 o'clock. We're having the homecoming, and it's just something that's been very special to me, and I've been there 35 years, and it's been through all kinds of things. We've, we've had as many as 25 people attending. Sometimes there are only three, so it just goes up and down, but through those years, the seven dear women are gone, but they had this vision of keeping this church alive and going. So that's what I really wanted to tell you about that. But really, the reason I came is I wanted to tell you about the plans that we have for the church and the future, and how it fits into the City of Vader, because it is historical. It's one of the oldest buildings in town, and there are a lot of wonderful old buildings in town. There definitely is David Holland's house, and David is the one who helped me put the church on the National Record of Historic Places and took me through that whole process, and so that's great. And then you've fixed up the jail and the beautiful park downtown. Our church is one of the pillars of the, of the community, and I don't want to lose it. But here's the deal. Our annual conference, Pacific Northwest Annual Conference, United Methodist Church owns the building and the property, and we have some plans for the future that would make it a nonprofit, and we really would like to move forward with that, because if, if the church would close up and we would give up, the conference would take it and they would sell, and it could be a home, it could be a, a bed breakfast or a brew club. I'm not opposed to any of those things, but I just don't want to see that happen to this church and all that has happened through the years. And so that's what I wanted to share with you today. We are working on this idea of a nonprofit corporation, so we would, we would call it Grace Historic Church, and we would say it represents the Evangelical Association that founded and built it, the Evangel of the United Brotherhood that inherited it, and the United Methodist Church, which merged in 1968. And so it's, it's been those three denominations that have been a part of it, and so we would do that. But the idea that we really came up with was the Historic Church in Elbe, and I don't know if any of you have seen it. It's a little Norwegian Lutheran church that is on the National Record of Historic Places. They sent us a copy of their bylaws, which I loved, and we kind of put together a tentative bylaw. So we're working with them. They've helped us. They told us how to do, go about this, and so we're working on it. I brought some brochures and some books, photos of all the years that transpired and how we've restored the building. I'm, I'm only asking for some kind of support and to let the City of Vader know about this gem that's in your midst, and I really, you know, like I said, I poured 35 years of my life and ministry into this, and I've loved all of it, and it makes a good deal of sense to me to move forward, because I don't want to lose it. And the conference, it's not worth a ton of money, but they would put a big value on it. We might be able to talk them into, and I've been working on this for a year now, of actually just giving it to us, but we even have some money that has been given to us, so we are able to buy it if they would have a reasonable price so that we can continue to support it and to fix it up and to keep it going. I love the idea of a museum living church. It has so much history. I mean, if you just walk in and you can feel it and see that, and we've got it set up that way. But we still want to worship there. We are connected now on Zoom with the Randall United Methodist Church and the Morton United Methodist Church, and so we've got the technology, and we do communicate with them, and we have worship at 9:30 on Sunday morning, and, you know, that can be anywhere from five to 10 people that show up, but we're, we're still wanting to do that, and we can do that as a historic Grace church, too. So we've, we've got the bylaws, and so what I want to do is just, just read you the introduction to the bylaws that we've got, and I'll close with that. These are the bylaws of Grace Historic Church and modeled on the little church in Elbe. So Article One is purpose. The purpose for which the corporation is organized are: to serve as a center for the ongoing historical ministry of Grace Evangelical Church, Grace Evangel of the United Brotherhood Church, and Grace United Methodist Church, the founding denominations of Grace Historic Church. Number Two, to preserve and maintain the historical integrity of Grace Evangelical Church as a registered national historic site. And Number Three, to encourage and promote the preservation of early Vader area history. And so it goes on, and we've got a way to set it up, and it's still going to take a little bit of work, and I think I have the time and the energy left, but this is the last big thing I really want to do in terms of ministry. So it may take another year to actually get the nonprofit set up and to get the building and the property, but I just want you to know that that's where it is and where we are. So thank you for letting me share that tonight, and it's good to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. And letters of support or recommendation from the city, we can get stuff like that, too, to help, to help the process out, or, but definitely be in contact with us if we can help.
I will. It's taken me so long, but I came up with this idea a year ago, and it's just been hard, but the first thing I want to do is to come and share it with the city councils. So at least we've begun that project, and I'll keep in touch. We'll work it through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back.
Can you make sure one of those brochures make it in my mailbox, Joe? Please?
Yeah.
I'll leave them.
Candy. All right, super. That's right. All right. Thank you. All right, so next is Lewis County Assessor Ross Nielsen, Levy and Tax Presentation.
Super exciting. When you say levy and tax, everyone's like, yeah.
I'm sitting up in my seat.
So I'll, I'll start real quick. I'm Ross Nielsen. I'm the Lewis County Assessor, everyone's favorite person in the whole county. Does everyone, you get that, you get that value change card? It's got my name on it, so everyone knows who to be mad at. But the, what we wanted to do tonight, Terry is my lovely specialist, and we're trying to get the word out on how this works. Now, it won't be done by midnight, I promise. I'm just kidding. We'll try to go through fairly fast, but please, if you have questions, let us know. It's really confusing. It's government, so they have to make it really, really confusing. But, but like I said, what we want to do is help the city and the entities be able to get the money that they need and know how the process works, and also kind of protect themselves, because it's, it's, there are things that, like if you are, if you are at your highest lawful, or not your highest lawful, your statutory max for levy, and the values go down, you can lose money. And so this is the stuff we want to do, want to inform you about. One of the things that we're going to do is we're going to go through kind of a simulation of the values start here, and then the market goes way up, and then the market crashes, to kind of show what happens. But like I said, please let us know if you have questions. That's what makes the presentation really long, is if we have a lot of questions, and I'm not trying to discourage you guys from asking questions. Please don't be shy, but we'll try to explain everything as much as we can. I also have an open door in my office, so if anyone has a question about your house, about, about how the tax system works, in any of this, I always welcome people to come into my office and, and sit down and talk about it. We can sit down with Terry, or just myself, or with any of the people there. There's also a lot of exemptions and stuff like that a lot of people don't know about, like you, assuming you're getting in contact with the Department of Revenue to, for that, for the, the tax, for the property tax, they type exemption for that.
Yes.
Yeah, so we don't administer that, but we, we often, just so people know what our office does, and Terry has been a really big help with it. We've had a few cemeteries. The families have gotten old, and the person who's taking care of it passed away, and nobody knows what's going on, and these properties are owned by someone that has taxes on them, because they aren't, they don't have the exemption on the taxes as a nonprofit. And so we have been hunting down to the point where last year, we actually had our employees drive up to an old cemetery and try to look at the, at the, you know, try to find out when the last person was buried, and they ended up finding a phone number for the people, and they lived next door, and it was the husband had passed away, and the wife was elderly, but we were able to help give them the paperwork, get it to the Department of Revenue, get them in a nonprofit status, so they wouldn't lose the property, because it would go into foreclosure, and nobody wants an old cemetery, and then it just creates a mess. But, but like I said, we've done our best to really help people in this situation. So we're here to help the city, and we're here to help anyone that needs help. So if you have questions, call our office. I'll let Terry go. What really takes the longest in the presentation is that I can't shut up, and so Terry will go into hesitation, great, and I keep standing up on the wall, so I'm trying to be quiet.
Yeah, and the thing that takes the second longest is that I can't shut up, so good luck. So we can go to the next slide here. So before we start, this presentation is for informational purposes only. It's not the end-all, be-all. The current Department of Revenue levy manual is about 200 pages, and, and that just covers the, you know, little bit of work that we do at the end of each year to get these over the finish line. If you're looking to run a new levy or a rate resource, however, you should be working with your, directly with your legal counsel. For you guys, that's not as much of a, of a concern, but for fire districts, that sort of thing that are having to run levies or schools. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So property taxes in Washington State use a budget-based system, not a rate-based system. So a lot of times you'll see, you know, what your rates are for, for your taxes for the year, and those rates, as we'll kind of explain later, are the end result of the process, not the beginning of the process. So for some places, it would be that way. It would be that you would get a rate, and then they would just multiply that by whatever the value ends up being, and that would be the total you were getting. Here, we start with a budget. We divide it by the total, the total amount of value, and that becomes your So what you need to set up the levy process is taxpayers. So you need the value of all of the properties in the district, and then you need the taxing districts' residences, the amount that they, that they want to levy. Taxing, taxing districts are able to increase their budget primarily by two options. Every year, they can increase their levy percentage by, by 1% over their highest lawful from the previous year. And this, they can take every single year. The second way is through new construction and state-assessed utilities. So anytime, you know, a new building is, is built in your district, that amount of new value gets also added into the total value of the district. And the way that, that we add those in is we, it's a little complicated again, but we take that, whatever the value is of the new construction coming in, we multiply it by the levy rate from the previous year, and then we add it to the total, to the total highest lawful limit, the total that you could take for the year. You get a bump basically each year based on new construction and state-assessed utilities. Go ahead and go to the next slide here. So to, to determine the levy rate, what you do is you take the budget, you divide it by the total value of the district, and you multiply that by 1,000. And that equals out your levy rate. So for an example, an EMS levy that had a budget of $50,000 and the total value of the district being 100 million. So you take that 50,000, divide it by the 100 million, multiply it by 1,000, and it comes out to 50 cents. So 50 cents ends up being their levy rate, but it all starts with that budget. Go ahead and go to the next slide. For the taxpayer, what that ends up looking like is you take your property value, multiply it by that rate, divide it by 1,000, and that equals the amount that you're paying for taxes. And we'll do a little breakdown. I've actually got Ross's taxes and up here, his property taxes with a breakdown, so we can kind of go through that a little bit easier. But as an example, so a $300,000 house, if it was, if it was in this EMS district with a rate of 50 cents per thousand, you take that 300,000 value of the house, multiply it by the levy rate, divide that by 1,000, and the total amount that that person is paying into this particular levy for the year would be 150 dollars. Okay? Any questions on, on that? So that was in the first year that we were looking at this. Now, this is where we were talking about earlier with our kind of crash course example of what can happen when housing prices sort of go up and down. So in this example, we're now in the second year of this levy. So I'll go through a couple of things here. We're going to have to kind of get down to a point, I guess. So the 1% increase that the district can have each year. So we start off with that. So in the second year, automatically, they can get a 1% increase going from that 50,000 to 50,500. So in the second year, automatically they can get a 1% increase going from that 50,000 to 50,500. In this example, they have also been able to add in another $1,500 in value from new construction and state-assessed utilities. Okay, which means that their year-two budget could be that 50,500 plus 1,500. So the total amount that the district can now ask for a year-two is $52,000. But what's happened in that same time is that values have skyrocketed. So the total value of the district last year was 100 million. And this year, it's now 200 million dollars. What ends up happening with that is you see that that budget at 52,000, now divided by an even larger number at 200 million, ends up dropping that rate down to 26 cents. But in actuality, they're raising, so the rate ends up being, you know, almost half of what it was the year before. But because of the overall value of the district, they're still ending up with a budget higher than the one the year before. So the year-two levy rate with double the assessed value, almost half the levy rate to 26 cents per thousand. Go ahead and go to the next one. So for a person's tax bill, it does the same thing. Although, as we said earlier, all of these, all of the values have now doubled, right? So that person's $300,000 home isn't a $300,000 home anymore. It's now a $600,000 home. That person is now paying at a rate of 26 cents per thousand. So if we do that now, the 600,000 multiplied by their levy rate, divided by 1,000, we'll get a total tax bill of $156 for that district. So even though the property value doubled, the increase in taxes was only $6 from year one to year two. And that's just how that works. So as rates go, or as values go up, rates go down. And we'll see that here coming up. So go ahead and go to the next slide. So in this example now, we're going into year three. And unfortunately, in year three, there's been just an absolute catastrophe in the housing market. In this scenario, we have now lost, it's now a quarter of the value it was last year or half of the value that it was initially. So now our total assessed value for the district is down to $50 million, where initially it was 100 million. So again, for this year, we can increase by 1% each year. This year, we had no new construction because the housing market collapsed, people aren't building. So the total amount that the, that the district could borrow or could levy is 52,520 for this year, right? So now if we take that 52,520, we divide it by the total value of the district, multiply it by 1,000, we end up with a levy rate of $1.05. So the year-three levy rate with half the first year's assessed value caused the levy rate to increase up to that $1.05 per thousand. Go to the next slide. So in this example, it is an EMS levy. EMS levies have a statutory maximum rate, the most that they can charge is 50 cents per thousand. Unfortunately, what they're asking for came out to be $1.05. So what happens in that circumstance is that there is a hard limit. And once that hard limit of 50 cents per thousand is hit, they can no longer levy anything above that. So for this year, to figure out how much they can levy, we take their $50 million valuation, multiply it by 50 cents, which is the maximum that we know they can take, divided by 1,000, and what we end up with is $25,000. So for that year, that district now ended up, they were, they should have been able to levy 52,000. They're only able to levy 25. And so for that year, they end up $27,520 short, you know, for what they've budgeted. So the district will end up losing that money from their levy because they're not allowed to collect it due to the statutory maximum. So they end up having to make do for that year at $25,000. Next slide. And so now we're going to look at that for the taxpayer. Again, that person's total value has gone down. So it went from 300,000 up to 600 and now it has dropped all the way down to 150,000. We're going to multiply that by the 50% maximum rate that they could take, divided by 1,000, and we're going to see that their tax bill for the year ends up at $75. With that reduction in the levy rate, down to the statutory maximum and the reduction in property value, this, this person's paying $81 less than they did in the second year. So as we said earlier, when values go up, the levy rates go down. And when the values go down, levy rates go up. Having a large gap for, for districts between what their current levy rate is and what their statutory maximum is indicates that the district has a large buffer to keep their full levy amount, even if there is a property value drawn. Now, this example is extreme and we like to point that out because we don't want to scare anybody. And we especially don't want to scare the districts. We build it that way just to show how dramatic that change can be.
And not the exact numbers, but this more or less happened from 2000 to 2005 to 2008. I was doing fee appraisal at the time and we saw a lot of that, where what I was doing was tracking what properties had done. Because when I did appraisal in 2008, the banks were in panic. And so they wanted to know what the market was doing and I said, well, it was worth this in 2000, it was worth this in 2005, and now it's worth this. So it can happen, but it's not usually in one year. And it usually, it doesn't happen that often. That was, 2008 was a huge storm that just blew up. So we hope that something like that doesn't happen again. But a smaller version of it can happen if we have a taxing districts that takes their absolute maximum. They can, if the, we've had some fire districts that have, have taken huge jumps. And if they're right, if you're right at that max, if the housing prices go down a little bit, you might not get all the money you want. So that's kind of what we wanted to show is that, that you can get more money and the taxpayer generally pays pretty steady, even though the values go up and down. But the taxing districts can take a beating if you're not careful with this.
So if an EMS levy is, their statutory maximum is 50 cents, what about, what about a city? What's our statutory maximum? That has our favorite answer from the assessor's office, that depends. With cities, there are several other factors. So it starts at a specific rate, I want to say it's $1.35. But then they get subtracted out, if they have a library district, that amount gets subtracted out of the total that they can levy. If they have a, if they have their own fire district, or if they don't have their own fire district, the fire district that covers their area, that also is part of it. So each, each city is a little bit different. I can, I can look up and figure out what your guys is, or at least was for last year. Because it will change every year depending on what the levy rates end up being for each district. So it can, yeah, it can vary a little depending. But comparatively, the cities have sort of the most flexibility, I think, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't think we have any cities that are on the verge of that max.
No.
So it's like I said, that's just more of a, we like the kind of people to know how it works. And but as I said, I haven't, you know, we would be frustrating if you were at the max and there was a, a major, you know, if we see, hey, there's an issue here.
Yeah, I'll be honest, yeah, that part is mostly for the fire districts.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, we can go ahead and move on to the next one here. So the most important part of the levy process is the amount that your district's certifying, not a levy rate. Assuming that your district doesn't exceed any levy limitations, then the amount that you're certifying to the Board of County Commissioners is what your district will receive. Although the levy rate is, is the answer to the math problem of how to collect the amount that the district certified. So it's just the amount that you're asking for divided by the total amount of the district, you know, equals out our levy rate. Another part of the levy process is tax code areas. So tax code areas are groupings of properties that have the same combination of taxing districts that fall into based on their location. The example shown here shows three different taxing districts. And the way that they're arranged basically creates seven different tax code areas. So anytime that they overlap, you're going to get a new set because these ones are unique. So this square here has both the library and the hospital. But this one has the library, hospital, and the fire district. So it's whatever, as long as there is a unique combination of districts that go into an area, it becomes its own TCA. And those TCAs are just how we apply those levy rates across the entire county. Otherwise, you'd have to do it for each home. So it's easier to be able to look at an entire area and know, you know, what the total tax levy rate is for it. Go to the next one.
But an example of that is you guys have a taxing district that crosses out of our county in being part of the Castle Rock School District.
Oh, that too?
Yeah, because the Castle Rock School District, you're paying a levy to that district. And so part of our big math problem job that we have to do is figure out how much this area of the Castle Rock School District has due and apply it. And so when you look at those crossovers, you've got a fire district that's bigger than your city. And so the city has this portion of the fire district. And then you also have the overlay of that with the, with the school district. So that's kind of what a lot of our job, and that's what Terry does really well, is trying to figure out who's paying to what taxing district and then how much they owe, how much everybody owes.
So this is an example of consolidated tax rate. Again, this is Ross's.
This is mine.
Yep. And so you can see for Ross each year, how many different districts he's paying into, how many different funds, and, and the rate for each fund. So, you know, he's, he's paying in to the state tax or the state school levy, Part A and Part B, as well as the county, the county roads, fire district, and, you know, several other school district or of the Winlock School District levies as well, and cemetery district. So for that, it shows again, each one, the total, the total levy rate and the total amount that, that he is paying out for each one.
And just so you, everybody knows, this is on the website, if you just Google Lewis County Parcels, it's on there. If you want to see where your money goes, you can actually, so that, the, so sorry, I was going to keep talking. So the, of what I pay, $7.17 per thousand is what I pay in taxes, total. Of that, $1.47 of that, which is $518 of this, goes to the state pressure, Part One, state pressure, Part Two. You know, so this is, you can actually go on there and see how much you're paying to the county and how much you're paying to the school district. And you can know where the money goes and you can know the percentage. And you can see how that levy rate works, is as the value goes up, that rate comes down on all of the, all the big ones. And then you can look at prior years too. Then the best part is you can click on those on the left and you can get the phone number of the school district if you want to talk to them about where the money's going. You can click on the fire district and say, where does that money go? So it's all on there.
Yeah. Go on to the next one here. Other limitations. So in addition to the statutory maximum, we have a couple of other things that the districts have to contend with. One is a 590 aggregate limitation and another is the constitutional 1% limitation. I'm going to not spend too much time on these. Right now, there aren't any districts in the county that are bumping up too hard onto these numbers, the 590 aggregate or the 1%. It is possible, depending, like we were talking about earlier, when, when some districts raise their, their rates to a point. And if you have any kind of downturn, you can end up pushing up on those limits. So the 590 aggregate limitation doesn't allow the combination of senior and junior levies to exceed 590. So if, if you're looking at Ross's consolidated tax, tax bill, everything outside of the school levies and the county regular levy, I think.
And the state too, is it?
Yeah, I think both state A and B. I think it's just state A and B and county that aren't included as senior or junior taxing districts. So if you take those three out, the other remaining districts can't, can't add up to over $5.90 total per thousand.
And usually what happens when the market crashes, like 2008, that became an issue.
Yeah.
So we hope that never.
Right, right. And then the constitutional 1% limitation limits all non-voted regular levies, combined tax rates to less than 1% of the true and fair market value. So that just means that the total amount of taxes raised can't be more than 1% of the market value of, of the, of the entire district. And again, that, that isn't something that I don't think we're ever going to get close to. I don't see exactly, I don't, I don't, I don't see that, but, but it's something we point out because it is, it is a limitation technically. It's just not one that you're going to probably run into. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So what happens when you exceed those limitations? Well, when those limitations are exceeded, we're required to proration the rates down as to bring down the total rate. When that happens, and so these, these ones are a little bit different than your statutory maximum because these depend on other districts. And, and so because it's a combination of all the districts that's pushing it over that maximum, you can't just take one of the districts and chop it off until you get to the, to the right amount. There's a pecking order. It's a very, very complicated sheet that we have to fill out from the middle down and then from the top to the middle to get it to go. Yeah, that's not even a joke, it's horrible. And, and so hopefully we don't have to do that anytime soon. But what ends up happening is certain amounts of, of money will get taken out of each district until it evens down below that 590 level. So say, right now you were just at like $6, the first thing that would have to go would be cemetery districts. So that, that whole levy would just be gone. And then if you were still above that level, then it would drop to the next section, which is, I think, fire districts.
But a portion of the.
But a portion of the fire district.
Yeah.
And then that would get rationed down. And if you're still over, then you go to the next section and keep going until you end up underneath that total. When that happens, those districts are just out of luck, unfortunately. Which is why we try to make sure, you know, that if something like that was on the horizon, that we would be, you know, yelling to the districts about it to make sure that, you know, everything that could be done was being done. Go to the next one here. So in those circumstances, here's another thing I'm not going to spend much time on, it's buyouts. So in those circumstances, we talked about TCAs earlier and how those combinations can happen. And for the 590 aggregate limit, that is per each TCA. So the, the total TCA can't be over 590. In those circumstances where it is, it can be to the benefit of a district to pay off another district's levy. So say you had a tiny cemetery district and it was only in a portion of your total district. And their total levy for the year was, you know, 2,000. And their total levy for the year was, you know, $2,000. But that rate, because it's pretty small, ends up being high enough to push you over. You could pay them that $2,000 out of your budget and then be able to recoup the ability to collect from the entirety of your district. And we haven't had to do that, again, I think since 2008.
Yeah.
I think one of the hospital districts, I think the hospital district did it with.
More than I think.
Yeah.
More than I was here are.
Yeah.
But yeah.
And then they forgot to do it for a couple of years or something.
Yeah. But basically, you can, they can shift funds around to get beneath that cap.
Yeah, and it can end up, yeah, it can end up saving you money or making you more money by buying them out of their, you know, smaller portion. Yeah, again, this is an unfortunately complicated one for a slideshow, but we throw it in there anyway. We'll go ahead, go to the next slide. So contracts between any districts are conducted outside the levy process and between the districts only. So for example, like, you're gonna always have to bend the opposite of any legal requirements for your district, like public meetings, budget amendments, contractual agreements, that sort of thing. You'll always make sure that you have ample time to meet and discuss and avoid missing any deadlines. We would require a new levy certification and budget amendment and a copy of the contract if a district is gonna go ahead and do that. Next slide. Districts may have limitations. So values through the county are very high, having more than doubled in the last five years. Because of this, there are no districts eminently in danger of the 590 or the constitutional 1% limitations. However, like we were saying, some fire districts, especially those having had recent lift lifts, are much closer to their statutory maximum than other districts are, which means that if the values fall dramatically, their rates will rise and the stat max limit might come into play sooner than everything else. Statutory maximum levies for fire are $1.50 and 50 cents. Like I said, unfortunately, with cities, they kind of vary depending on the city. So this is just cautionary as we don't want any districts to be caught if the property values didn't suddenly fall. Go to the next one. When your district's thinking about running about a measure for a new or increased levy, you have to take into account when deciding to run a valid measure and for how much. Taxpayers in Lewis County generally pay into seven to 11 different levies. Some other areas of the county have up to five different school levies. So here is a breakdown from 2024, the total taxes paid into the county and the percentage of each type of district that those are paying into. So you can see the state school and local school combined are about half of the total taxes paid in Lewis County every year. And, you know, when you look, the cities and towns equal out to about a little over 3%. So if someone comes in here yelling at you guys about their taxes, you can say, it's probably somebody else's fault. Go ahead, go to the next slide. So there are several documents that are required to do the levy. One is the ordinance or resolution, levy certification, the administrative refund request, district contact list, and finally, the budget. All this is turned into the board account commissioners, and they certify it over to us. Although most of the time what happens is that stuff gets mailed to us, we walk it over to the commissioners, and then they certify it back to us. Go to the next slide. So this is a copy of what the ordinance resolution looks like. This is where you show that you want to take your 1% rate or increase from the highest lawful or more if you have bank capacity. You can start with the last year's levy amount. You can show your dollar amount and percentage increase over the prior year's levy. If you're trying to get your max and you're unsure exactly of those numbers, you can put numbers that are higher just to not leave any capacity on the table. There's no penalty for overestimating the amount that you need. The worst thing that can happen is that our office will, you will hit a statutory maximum, and you will get a cut to that statutory maximum. There's no penalty if you're not exactly right on your budget or your ask.
We've had a few fire districts that did levy, did lift lifts, and so they're, you know, saying, I want to take a dollar thirty. And what ended up happening is their budget wasn't high enough to reach that dollar thirty because the values went up, the rate went down. And so what ended up happening is they didn't get 100% of what they thought they were gonna get, but they got 100% of their budget.
Yeah, we got 100% of what they asked.
So they came in mad, you know, hey, how come we got all over our budget, but you killed us on the rate? The rates answered who math problem. And they asked for $400,000 and they got $400,000. So what we're saying is if you're unsure what the market's gonna do or anything like that, you can ask for extra. If they had asked for more, we would have cut them off right at the top. And they would have got the maximum of that rate. But because of Washington's budget base, that's been the budget. So like I said, if you guys are trying to kind of maximize what you can take.
It was a little high. Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, and in that circumstance, they were upset, but there's nothing I can do. Those are the numbers they handed me, and I have to do the math with the numbers that, you know, that the district certified to us. And so ultimately, yeah, they ended up losing out on a little bit of money this year. Hopefully, they've gotten it set for next year.
We've had a whole bunch of meetings.
I hope we've got it figured out. I think we do. I think we do.
So you guys understand how the bank capacity works? It isn't actual money in the bank. What it is, is that if you could take 1% per year, more than the highest lawful that you had, but if you don't take it, the capacity to take it still grows. So if you haven't needed that money, but then you have a year, you need a bunch of money, you might have 3% or 4% of that that has been just sitting there. So Winlock has done that. They haven't taken an increase in a long time, and so they have a lot of banked capacity. And like I said, there's not money in the bank, but if they needed something, they can ask for quite a bit more. I haven't looked into what.
Vader has quite a bit of bank capacity.
Yeah, I think so too, yeah.
And that's really good to have because then if you have that downturn in the market, you've got a buffer.
Yeah, or if you have an extreme need, you've got, you know, yeah, you've got room to make that choice instead of having to go out and ask.
I think we were talking about in the past, I think we went up like a large amount, like half of it, because we had like, I don't know, quite a bit. Correct if I'm wrong. I think we were gonna look at it again next time and see about like getting closer to being, having no bank, but it sounds like it's a good thing to have.
Yeah, I mean, it really depends, is who balance you guys want to find.
Yeah.
Wasn't it 8.9% Joe? I think we had 8.9% banked, and then we banked another 1% last year.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was up there. You know, the flip side.
Could I ask a couple of questions real quick? Just like, really easy. I appreciate your guys' time, and I'm sorry that I'm not able to be there. I'm a little under the weather. So is there the potential for levies to increase property value? Because homeowners essentially foot the bill for it. So is that a solid investment to like vote for a levy? And should people just be considerate of how the levy is spent, like whether it be toward infrastructure, like gaining a library, like you're saying, these different tax arenas that we, you know, we don't have the potential to have a hospital that's not on our realm, but other things. Sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll start out with the first question, which, we're not California, so the values have nothing to do with the levies other than that math problem. So in other words, we don't raise property. In California, they are actually raising property values to bring taxes up because they're not budget based, they're rate based, so they just say, okay, we're gonna crank up the values so that we collect more taxes. Washington, it's not. The values are completely separate, and they're set by the appraisers in our office. And they're based on sales, and we, like I said, we don't know who lives there, we don't know what kind of income they have, we don't know any of that. We're just valuing a house and a building and a business or whatever, as a business, but a, you know, building has a business in it. So, yeah, so there's no, the only correlation there is after we set that value and you set your budget, we do the math problem. As for, as for where the money goes, I highly recommend whenever someone says, bring my taxes down, I say, I don't live in your district and can't vote, so I really can't. But what you can do is you can go to the school board meetings and ask them where the money is being spent. And you can go to the fire district meetings, and you can say, where is my money being spent? And you can go to the library meetings, and you can go to all of that. And I highly recommend everybody get involved and know where it is. So I'll try to keep it short, but I have a friend that called me from Kenneway. Kenneway, Pascal, one of the two, and he called me up, and he said, how's this levy thing work? I'm going to a levy meeting at the school. And I said, so I explained it to him, and he was tracking, and he got it, and he called me the next night mad because he was the only one to do how the levy system works. And so they put him in charge of the levy in the school district. But what he did was, which really impressed me, is that he sat down and they put out a flyer on Facebook and handed them out that said, here's what we're doing to cut our school districts so to save money. Here's what we're doing to make sure that your kids are well-served, and this is the need that we have, and this is specifically where the money's going. And his pass was flying colors because they put everything out there. We want you to know where the money's going. And so that was great. So that's what I recommend from the taxing districts, be wide open and answer all the questions that people have. And the people that live in a taxing, tax code area, which everyone does, should be calling, you know, clicking on those phone numbers on the website and calling them and saying, where's your next meeting? And go talk to them and just say, where is the money going? And because that's, all of us being informed and knowing what's going on and knowing where the money goes and determining if you want to have a library here, you know, Vader, this is the library, right? You know, it used to be across the street, but, you know, you guys can determine what the needs of your community are and figure out how best to spend it. And I recommend that the people be involved, not just the council, but the people in the area, because if you want something, ask for it and work through it. So I hope that answered your question.
I really feel that my question was misunderstood altogether because I just asked if, like, if voters were to like vote for a levy, would it have the potential of increasing their property value? Should homeowners consider investing in certain levies? I don't know where you came up with California. Ross, you kind of went off on a tangent there, man, and I, it's okay, but you misunderstood me.
I think it was because you said values. I think you mean taxes.
No, no, he's saying, is there, are there levies that a homeowner should invest in? Like, would that increase your home value or your property value by?
I guess if you had, got into a better school district, finding these values overall.
Right.
But I would have no way to track.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that there'd be a good way to track that.
Yeah, I would say an example of that is probably the Winlock versus Toledo, the value difference there. You can, hard part is that everyone wants to attribute the value difference to something. I could say one thing that we saw affected the way homes sold was Toledo had gigabit internet and Winlock had terrible internet. So a lot of families would move there to have the internet, so that's going to increase the value of the properties in theory. But then as soon as that happened, then everybody started buying Winlock in it. So I don't know how that really works, but I can see that theoretically that you could increase the value of an area by having better infrastructure you've invested. Putting that as an assessor or an appraiser in line is almost impossible because there's never, we always call those, you know, ergo property, which is, this is the, this is the cause, this is the benefit. We don't know if that really is working in there. But, you know, in theory, if you make your town more popular, then values will typically go up.
Right, people will pay more to buy a house there, which increases the values.
But that's something that the city council would work on, not the assessor's office. I don't promote or not promote. I've had people that want me to go to the school district levy meetings, and I'm like, no, I stay far away. We're just valuing properties and doing the math problem. I hope that answers. Sorry, I misunderstood before.
That's fine. Thank you, Ross.
Okay. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So this is the levy certification sheet. So this is where you send us your final levy amount that you wish to collect, including any increases for new construction, state assessed utilities, and including the refund levy if there is any. You can, again, you can put a higher number on this as to not leave anything on the table. The number that you put on here, that total number, also creates an upper limit. But again, if that upper limit is above another one of those cutoffs, then those cutoffs don't matter. It's whatever the lowest total is, is the one that you get. So you don't want, please use separate forms if it's a fire EMS. Again, for you guys, it's city, so you're gonna have the one levy that you're filling out each time. Go ahead and go to the next slide there. Administrative refunds, those come in, should be going out probably next week. Those come from the treasurer's department, and they, this is to let you know if you wish to collect your refund or not. Refunds happen throughout the year. Your tax rate, your tax levy is set at the start of the year, but values for that tax year from, you know, specific homes can change over the course of the year. Someone could go in or out of the senior exemption. They could challenge the value of their home or their business, and it could end up being lowered. When that happens, that amount of tax money that would have been collected is no longer available for you for that year. And so at the end of the year, the treasurer's office tallies up all of those pluses and minuses throughout the year. And if it ends up in the negative, then the district can apply to levy that amount the next year on top of their levy, basically to recoup whatever loss there was. Again, I didn't look up to see if Vader had one last year. I think they, I think you did, but it was maybe for a couple of bucks.
We did, yeah. We got one of these forms, and we're looking at with Lisa, and we're like, what the heck is this thing?
Yeah.
But it wasn't much. It was like 40 bucks or something.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Some districts, depending on where they're at, are gonna have a lot more. And some of our smaller districts, I think I had one that was a dollar fifty for one of the cemetery districts last year.
Yeah.
And she said, do I have to fill this out? No, okay. I heard her right away on the phone. So, yeah, you know, it doesn't, it's not terribly difficult. All you have to do is click on a box on yes, I want to take this refund, or no, I do not, sign it, and send it back into us. We'll take it from there. Go ahead and go to the next slide. We'll also send out a district personnel contact list for you to fill out each time. We just like to be able to know who we're supposed to call and when. If your levy's running behind and we're getting down to the nitty gritty and I'm panicking because I don't have anything from here yet.
Poor Terry gets to chase down the cemetery districts.
Yeah.
They don't ever, you know, they have someone that lives elsewhere that deals with it and didn't get the mail. So Terry, that's a lot of. So Terry, that's a lot of Terry's fun job, chasing down.
Yeah, that last week is, is pretty interesting.
Cause if you don't turn in that paperwork, you don't get anything.
Yeah, yeah. If, if we don't get any paperwork from you by our cutoff date, you don't get a levy for that year, you know? And so we're calling these districts saying, look, I know, I know that your levy's small, but you, you need it, I'm sure. You know, I'm sure you need gas for your lawnmower or whatever at that cemetery district. I guarantee you need that money. And, you know, all I'm asking for is a sheet of paper here. So your budget deadlines. October usually is when public hearings start. November fifteenth is when the districts start to file their budgets with us. Well, with the commissioners. November thirtieth is the last day for cities and districts to turn in their budgets. And then the first Monday in December, the county and other taxing district budgets are certified to our office. Go to the next slide here. So in this, this example, so I'm just going to show you a couple of the top line numbers from, from a district. So for this year, for the fire district, their highest lawful levy, the maximum amount that this particular district could take that year was seven hundred ninety thousand five hundred twenty-six dollars. Okay, this is their last year's levy rate. This is the amount of new construction that happened in their district in the course of that one year. This is last year's state assessed utilities and this year's state assessed utilities. Which I didn't explain earlier. So there are two ways that you can add to your, to your levy, right? It was the one percent and then new construction or state assessed utilities. So new construction value, I explained that one where you multiply it by the last year's levy rate and you can add it to the total. State assessed utilities is the same. The only difference is that what you get is the difference between this year's state assessed utilities and the last year's. So if there was an increase in state assessed utilities, which are anything like power lines or anything that crosses over county lines, the state assesses. And if the total for this year is higher than the total for last year, you take the difference in the two and again, multiply it by last year's levy rate and add it in. If it's less, like it is in this example, nothing happens. You don't get penalized because the state assessed utilities went down. You only get an increase if they go up. So the total value of the district in this example is seven hundred twenty-five million. Their previous year's actual levy was two hundred thousand eight ninety-six. So well below what their, what the highest lawful that they could do. Their resolution dollar increase was two thousand and eight dollars ninety-six cents, which equals one percent of that, of, of the total from the previous year. And then they certified their levy amount as eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Go to the next slide.
One question.
Yeah.
How do you know what the new construction value is?
We send that to you.
You tell us?
We tell you.
We're, we're getting it right now.
How do you know?
Like literally.
Cause that's, that's, yeah, we go drive around.
Okay, so this is, okay, so this is just based on yours.
Yeah, as, as of August first, anything that was added on to or new, like my son just bought a house here in Vader and, and it was a brand new manufactured home. And, and so that manufactured home wasn't on our rolls last year. And it is on our rolls this year. So the home portion of that is going to be new construction. So it'd be two hundred thousand dollars of new construction for that. And then that'll work into that.
So you'll find it. We don't have to tell you.
Yeah, you don't have to.
We sent the big spreadsheet, which will be coming here in the next couple of weeks, hopefully.
Yep.
And.
Cause I have a, cause I have a building permit. They, they stopped by to see if I had started construction too.
Right.
So they're, they, they are looking for that. But they're, they're also not looking for where buildings have been torn down or dismantled or empty properties to make those adjustments. It's like forward thinking.
No, we, we're looking for destroyed property also, but we have to be told it's there. It needs to be done. I've had, I've had people where I go out and knock on the door and they go, my barn fell down five years ago. And I said, did you call? And so if you have a building that comes down, anyone that has, anything that has a, a building destroyed, whether it's by weather or whether you took it down or whatever, call us and let us know what we, what we don't want to be high, we want to be correct. So if you have a building that's come down, if there's no permit for it, we don't know about it.
Yeah, and that, and that's ultimately what it comes down to is that when you're building, you're getting a permit for it, that flags it for us to go look at it. Whereas if something falls down on your property, unless you tell us, there's no, there's nothing flagging us to go look.
Yeah.
You know?
We're.
It's a great avenue. It, it is a great avenue and a connection for the county to make between the cities. It really is.
Oh, the permit process?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I couldn't understand what you said there.
He said, yes.
Oh, yes, okay. So, yeah, and that's something, actually, one of the things I want to talk about while we're here is make sure that we have good communication on the permits. Because we have so many, all the cities and then we have the county, that we're trying to collect all those permits and put it together. And then just so everybody knows, June, July, August, and into September is new construction time. So if you see us out, that's what we're doing during that time, is picking up, looking at all the permits, whether it's new, we call it new construction as a generic term, like Kleenex. But what it is, is we're coming out looking at permits. So if something's destroyed, we're out to, out to capture that. If something is, if something is added, then we'll be adding that value to the overall value and collecting how much of it is new construction for that new construction.
Go ahead and go to the next slide here. So unfortunately, this slide is going to be a little bit tough to tell. You, you have the PowerPoint. So.
Yeah, if anyone wants to see that PowerPoint, please take a copy.
Yeah, or I've, I've got my cards here too. I can leave them if anyone wants a copy of this.
I can just.
You can email me. Yeah, I think it's just, it's going to be tough to tell. So the previous, the previous slide had a bunch of numbers. The slide shows where those numbers fit into the, the shit that we use to calculate.
That you start in the middle, work down and then start at the top.
This one, we can basically start at the top and work our way through it. This one's a little bit simpler and it ends up being, it's two pages, it's one page from back. And it encapsulates everything that we need to figure out what your levy rate is for any particular district. So it has all of the numbers that we need open for. So what their highest lawful was the year before, multiplied by a hundred and one, which gives you a one percent increase. And so that tells you what their new highest lawful would be. We've got their current year's assessed value of new construction times last year's rate. We have that total amount that can be added in to their levy. So we get this total plus this total ends up equaling the total now new highest lawful for the year. Which is, again, like I said, it's the highest lawful plus any new construction or any, and any state assessed utilities equal out to the new highest lawful. So that's the total amount that they could take for the year. In this example, they asked for eight hundred and fifty thousand to make sure that they were going to get the maximum amount they could. So that eight hundred and fifty thousand ends up getting limited down to the total that they can take for the year, which is that seven hundred and ninety thousand. But by asking for more than that, they made sure that they got everything that they were entitled to get. So we go ahead and go to the next.
So this is the page that, that says, you should appreciate a math nerd. Because everybody doesn't have to fill this out themselves. It's because Terry, Terry does this and goes through all these calculations times one hundred seventy-two, the taxing districts we have every year and tries to fit, uses this information to figure out how much the taxes are going to be pre-cheried. So this is, like I said, appreciate a math nerd.
Yeah, it's better to have one person doing it for everybody than everybody doing it individually.
Yes, yes.
And then trying to coordinate that. I mean, it's bad enough just coordinating, getting a piece of paper. Yeah, I can imagine. And thankfully now we're done. I hope you guys learned something. Feel free to contact us if you have any questions. You can call me or Ross anytime. I will leave some of my cards here as well. For if, if anybody has any questions or wants a copy of that PowerPoint or just a little bit more insight into any part of this process, if you want some more information on. So, thank you guys. Thank you, Terry. Yeah, of course.
One of the biggest challenges that I've seen when we've been working through this is, you know, folks get the little card in the mail that says their house is worth fifty thousand dollars more and they think, oh, there goes my taxes. Well, not necessarily, right? Unless the district raises the taxes, actively raises it that year, it's, it's not going to change appreciably. You know, for instance, the city of Vader, you know, we, we've collected eighty thousand dollars in property tax every year since twenty seventeen.
Right.
Doesn't matter, you know, homes have doubled in price, give or take. And we get the same amount of property tax because we haven't necessarily levied, levied anything in, any higher. So that's a, that's a thing, I think people think that it's kind of like the California model where, that you were talking about where the, yeah, it's a percentage base, but it's not. We pick a amount of money we need and then we levy that rate, so.
Yeah, that's something.
If you don't raise your property taxes, you're not keeping up with inflation.
Right.
All of, all of. Which is another thing, people have a tough time sometimes. Why, again, that's why that one percent is built in there every year. It's supposed to be sort of a, a block against inflation. Unfortunately, it's one percent. And so that doesn't cut it and especially the last few years hasn't cut it. New districts, but, but yeah.
If it gets to the point where the one percent is being taken, the economy has gotten really wrong. But it's really, it's, it's interesting. As a general rule, most people pay ten percent more taxes per year. My value last year went up thirty percent, but my taxes went up like eleven. And so, you know, it's, it's hard because you see that number and you go, oh my gosh, what is happening? But just like you said, the only port, the only portion that's not budget based is that state, that state school, the McTerry money we call it, is the state portion is just a straight percentage. If you take that out of the mix, if everyone's value doubled, but the amount of taxes to collect were the same, your taxes would stay the same. If your, if your value went in half, your taxes would stay the same because it's those budgets. But the, the wild card is the state has, will affect that a little bit, but not a lot. It was a total of three and a half percent or something like that. But yeah, it's, it's hard because the value doesn't equal the taxes. Cause we've also had it happen the opposite, where we've dropped values in an area. I did it in two thousand nineteen in Centralia, where we lowered the value by about five percent. And that was the same year they had a seventy million dollar school levy, plus they implemented the state levy. So if you had a three hundred thousand dollar house, it could be a thousand dollar more just for the school portion. So everyone came in with pitchforks. They were, they were so mad and were like, it's a math problem.
Yeah.
It's actually my down. It shouldn't be my office at all. But, but yeah, so it, it, it does happen. And like I said, knock on wood, I hope the, you know, it doesn't make it so we have some of those problems. But that's something that, you know, you really don't want to see is the values going down dramatically. But I also understand that it's people's livelihood and their taxes they're paying. And, and you see that value and you panic. That's why I want to answer the questions. If anyone has, you know, people are like, well, I don't even want to go. No, please come talk to me. You know, let, let us explain things and let's look at it. And most importantly, let's make sure we didn't make a mistake in the value.
Yeah, we want to get it right, you know? That's, yeah. However, that turns out, we'll, we'll take it, you know? We, we always want to do the, whatever, whatever by law is what we do. That's, you know, our office is pretty, doesn't have a whole lot of wiggle room.
Yeah, but what is happening is if a house sells and it runs way off, it messes up our math. And so that's why we're trying to be right on the value and keep up with it. And we don't want to be over. We don't want to be under, we want to be right. Because when we get, when we get audited by the department of revenue, when they check everything, when a house sells, we are supposed to be close. If we're low, we, we get in trouble, or I will get in trouble. And if we're low, the taxing districts can get less, you know, from the state, from the state money that comes down, they'll limit that if we're too far off. So our goal is to be right on.
Excellent.
We'll start to talk some more.
Oh, sweet stuff. Appreciate your time. Any other questions for the assessor?
Actually, I think I understood some of it too.
Whoa.
Yeah.
They're going to make us coffee.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, guys. Appreciate your time. Any members of the public have any comments tonight? Okay, let's get into some fun stuff here. City business item number one.
Council to discuss the application request submitted by the Lions Club for the Pumpkin Fest event.
That's you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Want to talk about your Pumpkin Fest event? You're here.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we pass the application request for the Pumpkin Fest event.
Motion, right, to Mr. Bailey to approve the application for the Pumpkin Fest event.
Okay.
Second.
Just so you know, the, I have the insurance, but it wasn't attached because we just got it right before we got here. And I tried to email it to the service in here. Just wanted to. So we do have it.
Yeah, so you, you have the insurance and all, all set up, so it's good.
Yes.
All right. And I heard a second from Mr. Ferguson. So this is Saturday, October twenty-sixth.
Yeah, tell us when it is.
A Street downtown.
Twenty-sixth, A Street, partnered with the Handcrafted Merchants. Yeah, the hand, the handcrafted merch is doing a trunk or treat. We follow the other volunteers. We're just going to hurt my heart and do it right there.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun last year. I had a good time.
Yeah. We'll have this thing shop this year. All right.
Nope, pumpkin chugging, huh?
No pumpkin. This is Pumpkin Fest.
So it's October twenty-sixth from.
Four to seven.
Four to seven on A Street and it's going to be all blocked off.
Yeah, requested the barricades.
Yep, we approved them last time, I believe.
I think all the council members should each have their own little, little, their thing set up. Yeah, content.
Have to work.
So just to, just to make sure. So it's going to be later.
I tried to get that Halloween off, I can't. So disappointed.
I'll build the trunk.
All right. Any other discussion on the trunk or treat? We had a first, second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, I heard the three ayes account. And you posed, motion carries. Super, thanks for putting that together. It's a lot of fun for, for the community. I'll be there. Well, go ahead, Mr. Ferguson.
I just said, good night, girls.
Any other elected official comment tonight? Any other, uh, elected official comment tonight? Going once, twice. Meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-four PM.
And I was starting to think.